Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Tuesday, May 14th. I'll call the meeting to order and start with roll call from the left.
Frank Mills, Bart Housen.
June Gagny.
Ian Katskovich.
Charlotte DeStardis.
Heidi Lee.
Brian Britt.
Sherri Pollard.
Determination of a quorum. There is a quorum, and I'll be appointing Dan Katskovich to seat for John Meyer this evening. Starting with public hearing A, 24-8 SP, Whit Barlow requesting special permit for Section 7.1A of regulations to construct a 967 square foot garage on property located at 470 Plainfield Pike, assessors map 32, block 58, lot 5, RA 60 zoning district. Do we have someone to speak for the applicant?
I'm the applicant.
Come on up to the microphone and just give us an overview of what you're doing.
I'm building a garage. The house is built 37 without a garage, and we're waiting to move in. Labor Day, and you would like to cover for cars. So, it's a basic station to the house.
So residential hobby.
Oh, yeah, it's only for cars.
Okay. All right, and there's illustrations in your packets.
Kids eat them.
Oh, you can hand those to staff. Thank you very much. All right, so this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. You can have a seat, you don't have to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, if they have a question, I'll direct it to you. So, anyone from the public, comment or question on this application. Any comments or questions from board members? Any comments from staff?
I'll go over real quick. This is the old Boy Scout camp, and it is a very large piece of property. The house and garage are located across from the center of the property, probably 500, 600 feet from any property lines, so nobody will be able to see it.
Thank you. And any last public comment? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion of closed public hearing.
Closed.
I have a motion by Frank to close public hearing. I have just a second by Bart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B, 24-9 SP of the town of Plainfield, requesting a modification to special permit 23-11 SP to increase the size of the approved police evidence building to 36 by 40 with 16 by 40 lean-to on property located at 210 Norwich Road, C2 zoning district. And do we have someone speaking for the applicant?
I don't believe anybody is here, so I'll run through it real quick.
Okay.
The garage, as it was designed, went out to bid, and the specs changed on it a little bit. It was steel studs, which are similar to wooden studs. It went to steel girders, which are much wider. That interfered with the door opening, so they had to expand the building about six feet widthwise, and the lean-to was expanded an extra two feet, so it was larger than when it originally approved. It did not get any closer to the wetlands, it got pushed toward the road a little bit. Also, the lean-to was originally proposed going on the roadside, that was switched to the other side, so.
So all the setbacks are maintained within regulation?
Correct.
Okay. Just a question on procedure, so when they realize a size difference, what would be the procedure? They should come back sooner rather than later to adjust it, right?
Right, so, I mean, the police just handed the bid specs over to the contractor.
Yep.
And it wasn't until the building inspector went out for inspection and said, hey, you figured the one was approved.
Okay.
So that's when the state realized.
So it was spot, inspection.
Yeah.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so if there's a comment or question from anyone on the audience on this application, this is your opportunity.
I'd like to make a clarification.
Sure.
I'm the general contractor.
Okay.
And my name is Joseph Andrew Elliott. The lean-to is on the correct side, as the drawing bid document shows.
Which was different than.
Hold on.
No, the bid document shows what your face in the building, it's on the left side. That's exactly where it is right now.
Okay.
Okay, just for clarification. And it's right where it belongs, according to the site plan, but that was never provided for the bids, just that you all know, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
So just a process question, Ryan. So when bids go out, do they go out prior to site plan approval for this or in conjunction, or does one come first?
I honestly don't know how this one occurred.
Okay. All right.
It's just, here's the building.
Gotcha. So maybe moving forward, we want to make sure that bid process, site plan process, are maybe a little more cohesive, so that there's not any kind of confusion?
And what do you have to deal with?
Okay.
This is our project.
Right, so we'll have to work with other town staff to just make sure that those processes come together. So if I need to write a letter to board selectmen, board finance, building, whatever, you let me know, we'll do that. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Any other comments or questions from board members?
Do you have any sort of dog's body?
Yes, sir.
Says it was. That was an issue last time.
So says resolved. Okay. Any other comments, questions from public, board, or staff? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by June to close the public hearing, second by Frank. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item C, 24-1 TA of the Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting a text amendment for the following purpose: Temporary six-month moratorium on applications pertaining to Section 12.32 to provide adequate time for the Planning and Zoning Commission to develop and adopt new zoning regulations to address the use regulated under Section 12.32, earth excavation, processing, and removal. This moratorium will not affect applications for renewal of existing permitted excavation activities. So I will just say that we currently have a six-month moratorium. In that six-month period, the board determined there are changes we would like to make to the regulations, so in order to give us the time to do that, we just need a six-month extension. So that's what this application is for. Anything I can say on that, Ryan? All right. Any comments or questions from the public on this application? Any comments or questions from board members? Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion of closed public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion by Bart and a second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item D, 24-2 TA of Sarah Luffler, requesting a text amendment to Section 9.35, permitted uses in the industrial 2 to add prefabrication of cabinets, et cetera, and storage of construction materials for new home construction, intake and processing of donated items with retail sales showroom for those donated items as an accessory use. Do we have anyone speaking for the applicant today? Come on up.
Before you go, you do have the text in your packets.
Thank you.
So I'm Sarah Luffler, Executive Director of Habitat Humanitarian Institute of Connecticut. Just requesting this amendment to the fabrication and storage and donation tender of all the freedoms for next night for the purpose of restoring.
So current business moving to?
Correct.
So this is a new location, is that right?
Correct.
And because the new location is under different regulations that don't permit all the uses that you currently have, so that's what brought you here today?
The industrial zone, industrial 2 zone, is designed for light manufacturing, light industrial, and business. Does not probably allow for retail sales or collection of donated materials, so that is the modification that they would like to propose in the industrial 2 district. And the first I think of is.
And just because I didn't look at the zoning map, industrial 2 zoning district is limited to what area of town?
So it's a few different areas. We have Long Plainfield Pike, those is industrial 2, and a lot of the area around it is.
So this would be allowing a commercial use as an accessory, the retail part is my fault.
An accessory to the rest of the business, so it's not just a retail store.
Yes. And this is just a text amendment, so they would have to come back with site plan, and during the site plan process, we'd look at hours of operation, traffic, and all those other things.
Well, they don't really have a whole lot of traffic going to it, I mean, a little bit of commercial, but it's already industrial zone.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm sorry, industrial room.
Yep.
So it's designed to handle a lot of traffic.
Okay. So just for public's awareness and board awareness, when we're looking at a text amendment, it impacts all properties in the zone. So even though there might be an applicant applying for a specific purpose, we have to take into account that any change to the text for industrial 2 will apply to all industrial 2 properties, so that's why I bring that up. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the public on this application? Yeah?
Two questions.
If you could just state your names.
Art Gagny.
Yep.
Where is this located?
So this is a text amendment, so this is for any industrial 2.
Okay.
Property.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I note the address was there. So, Ryan, you said this is a good fit for this particular, that's why I was asking where it was, for this particular case. Is this a, is retail a good fit for all I-2 properties?
So it's a good fit for the industrial 2 zone, so a standalone retail store is not permitted. This is prefabrication of cabinets, et cetera, storage of construction materials for new home construction, intake and processing of donated items, and retail sales showroom for those donated items as an accessory use, subject to the following conditions. First is donation drop-off shall be in the rear of the building and screened from view of the road and adjacent properties. Donation shall be moved into the building as soon as practical. Construction materials shall be in the rear of the building and screened from view of the road and adjacent properties. All fabrication and donation processing shall be performed within the building. So that is the full text.
So every building we have in I-2 zones would fit, they could do retail like this in the back or whatever?
Every property.
Okay.
But the primary use has to fit the I-2 permitted use.
Right.
So that it would only be allowed as an accessory use, and that would have to be declared at time of application with inspection by somebody.
Yeah, retail sales is only an accessory use or without.
Any other comments or questions from the public? If you could state your names for the record and then what your comment is, thank you very much.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Cindy Stacey. And I was wondering, remember on Plainfield Pike, the zoning deed for this?
The industrial 2 zone?
Yeah.
Plainfield Pike is where you line it was constructed?
Where was that?
You line?
Okay.
So that is, that is an industrial 2 zone, also that is industrial line.
Thank you, that's all you need.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? All right, hearing and seeing no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion of closed public hearing.
You make that motion.
Motion by June?
Second.
Second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, I'll call the regular meetings order. Additions and corrections to the agenda. So we do have three items to add under new business. Item C, 24-3 TA of the town of Plainfield. Item D, 24-5 SPL of Peter Dish. Item E, 24-10 SP of Fred Stavropoulos. I'll entertain a motion to add those to the agenda.
I'll make that motion to add those to the agenda.
Motion by June?
Second.
Second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on to citizen participation. This is opportunity for the public to address the board on an item that is not an agenda yet. Yeah?
I live on 26th Plainfield Pike.
We need, sir, if we get you off.
Would you just state your name for the record?
My name is Brian King.
Thank you.
I don't know when the policy was changed, but I remember when somebody bought your property, you had to get a notice, that's what was going on. When would that policy change?
So notices to abutters are required if there is a map amendment or a zone change. So if it's a site plan review, then noticing to abutters is not required. Am I correct with that, Ryan?
And also a special.
And special comment.
My question also is, I've talked with all the people that got affected by changes to the ground and property, and they were never notified. And I said, I was told, well, you gotta look through the chart by fire every week to find out whether something comes up. That's why there's no one here in the meeting, because nobody gets notified. There's something that has to change.
So what's legally required, minimally required, is what's followed by, by the town?
Yeah. Actually, commercial property, a property, my little land on this, where what's in the dark?
So when zone changes happen, that's when the abutting notices are made, but once that zone change has happened, if something's allowed by rights, then when an actual business gets into that property, there's not a notice to abutters, just the public notice in the term by fire. I have requested that, those things be put on Facebook as well.
All right.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you for coming. All right, any other public comment about citizen participation? Okay. Moving on to the unfinished old business. Item A, 24-8 SP, Whit Barlow requesting a special permit for Section 7.1A of regulations to construct a 967 square foot garage on property located at 470 Plainfield Pike, assessors map 32, block 58, lot 5, RA 60 zoning district. Any items for discussion on this application?
Have we received certified mailings listed in the staff report?
Yes.
Ryan, do you have any comments on this other than the notes in your note?
No, it's a very attractive looking building. You have the package where it's going to look like, you have the diagram where it's going to look like when you pack it. Nobody off the property will be able to see this, it's in the center of a very large property.
Then I would move to be moved to the public.
Okay, motion to approve by Bart?
Second.
Second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved. Moving on to item B, 24-9 SP of the town of Plainfield, requesting a modification to special permit 23-11 SP to increase the size of the approved police evidence building to 36 by 40 with 16 by 40 lean-to on property located at 210 Norwich Road, C2 zoning district. Any items for discussion on this application?
Move to approve.
Motion by Bart to approve.
On second.
Second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application is approved. Item C, 24-2 SPL of Reuben C Cardona, is that still an incomplete application, Ryan?
It is. They have to revise the site plan, so we will table this until next month.
Okay.
Can we really table it? Are we running the 65-day limit?
If they do not grant us an extension, it has to be acted on at your meeting.
Okay.
And really, if they're still incomplete by the 65 days, even if they request an extension, we're not obligated to give an extension.
Well, they will be granting a commission and extension if you not act to accept.
Okay, understood, so, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this application to our next meeting in June.
I'll make that motion.
So Frank, Frank motion, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, continued. Item D, 24-1 TA of Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting a text amendment for the following purpose: Temporary six-month moratorium on applications pertaining to Section 12.32 to provide adequate time for the Planning and Zoning Commission to develop and adopt new zoning regulations to address the use regulated under 12.32, earth excavation, processing, and removal. This moratorium will not affect applications for renewal of existing permitted excavation activities. Any points of discussion on this application?
So this is written text amendment, this is moratorium?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and we do have to put an effective date, so in making your motion, you would want to put the effective date as July 1st, which is the first day following expiration.
Okay.
From June 1st. Oh, I'm sorry, it's July 1st.
All right. All right.
I'll make that motion.
So I have a motion by June to approve with the effective date of July 1st.
Second.
I have a second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, application approved with the effective date of July 1st. Item E, 24-2 TA of Sarah Luffler, requesting a text amendment to Section 9.35, permitted uses in industrial 2 district, to add prefabrication of cabinets, et cetera, and storage of construction materials for new home construction, intake and processing of donated items with retail sales showroom for those donated items as an accessory use. Any items for discussion? And I would just like to clarify something. So the accessory use is not adding to all uses in the I-2 district, it's only adding to the prefabrication.
Correct.
So it actually does not apply to all uses, it is specified to this use only.
Okay.
So only if another business came in with the same use, they could be allowed that accessory use. So for example, a manufacturing company that does.
Towel holders?
Yeah, pot holders, we'll say.
I mean, based on the description, it would actually need to be prefabrication of cabinets and or.
Yeah, so it's very specific. Yeah, so I just wanted to make that clarification, because it just.
I think that limits the gentleman's concern.
Yeah, exactly.
About you being a wide open door for anybody, and I think it's a very specific requirement that would have to be detailed at the time of special permit, so.
Exactly, so.
It's still building, that's all.
And this is a text amendment, so in making your motion, you would set an effective date. Ordinarily, it'd be the first day of the month following our meeting, so June 1st, if you choose to make motion to approve.
So I would move to approve with an effective date of June 1st, 2024.
I'd second that motion.
All right, motion by Bart to approve, effective June 1st, second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, application is approved with that effective date of June 1st. Moving on to new business. Item A, 24-3 SPL of Alan Robert Carpenter PE, requesting permission to create a boarding house in an existing building on 2, at 261 Main Street, Musup. Assessors map 2M, block 107, lot 16, C2 zoning district. Do we have anyone speaking for the applicant?
Yes, thank you. I am Alan Robert Carpenter PE, representing the United Services who actually own the property. I have a little site plan here, kind of walk through if you'd like.
Yep, and do we have copies of that, Ryan, to distribute to 400s?
I have a couple.
If you could please, that, my eyes are good, but not that good.
Right, so, so United Services owns this property of 261 Main Street, Musup. They actually own two pieces of property there. The overall larger piece is 1.49 acres, includes a home on it and a garage. The other parcel, and that's a C2 zone, the other parcel is a 0.29 acre residentially zone property. We're not doing anything with that, because that United Services owns both pieces. They are proposing, it's on, it's on the corner of Milner and Main, it's the old, oh, forget the name of the family, yeah, the attorney, Paul Smith. Paul Smith's old house. So they're proposing to do a boarding house there. This is a cutout of the site plan, basically, this is the home. Main Street is here, Milner Avenue is here, proposing to add a small parking lot, seven parking spaces, south of the garage and north of the home, some sidewalks that, to provide access to the back door and the front door.
Do we have that page in our packet?
I believe you do, yeah. It's not colored.
Charlie. That is.
Yeah, I can give you that, the home didn't show up very well here, but it's, obviously, here and here. But, yeah, I already colored it a little bit, so you can see it a little bit better. So, yeah, so the home is, it's got to remain in the same footprint, adding some sidewalks to the, to access the front door and the back door, build a small parking lot. We have some erosion and sedimentation control measures here for that construction, the steel fence that wraps around the back of the garage and connects to the house to collect any runoff from the construction activities. We have some, what's called, stone trenches on the edge of the parking lot to collect the water quality runoff from the parking lot, and, you know, just, you know, small site plan to accommodate parking for, for the facility. They have an architect involved, I don't know if you've seen any plans from the architect yet, but they, they should have some, you know, some upgrades coming inside the building architecturally at some, at some point in time, but. Any questions? It's already served by water and sewer, building's already served by water and sewer. Fire hydrant on the street, right on Main Street, just in front of the property, so some of the utilities are already, already taken care of on the property.
Is the facility being retrofitted, or are we building on?
It's, it's, the existing home is gonna stay in the same footprint, I think they're just doing modifications in it to upgrade it. I've been in it, it's kind of old and dated and whatever, so I'm guessing that they're, they're gonna do some upgrades and, you know, internally to make it, you know, freshen it up, I guess, yeah. It's similar to, there's one across the street, same thing, it's a yellow building, like, yeah. This is, this is Milner, the other one is across the street. I'm not sure if it's United Service that's owned it, but same thing, a home, has a little parking area in the back of the building, it's kind of almost like mirroring.
So just to excuse me for one moment.
Yeah.
Hey, Ryan, weren't boarding houses moved to a special permit use in 2014?
That's my right objection.
So I'm just, I'm looking at Section 8.2 permitted uses, and item A, it says boarding agreement houses, tourist homes, deleted, Z 2014 0413. So then when you go to the special permit uses, you can see that item I, boarding houses added, Z 2014 0413, and that was effective February 11th of 2014, so I think this needs to be resubmitted as a special permit. Right here, boarding houses. So we would not be able to act on this application? It needs to be resubmitted as a special permit?
Yeah, we can do that. Well, you can accept it tonight as a special permit, I don't have a hearing for next month, for next month. I have not had time to go through this plan yet.
Okay.
Because we just received the.
Okay. So given that the regulation requires special permit process, that means public hearing.
Sure.
What I love. So, given that, I would entertain a motion to schedule this to public hearing.
I'd make that motion to schedule it to public hearing.
I have a motion by June to schedule the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, scheduled public hearing, posted in June, second Tuesday of the month.
One more thing, if you guys have any comments, any input that you need to address on the plan, please get up to us and give us an opportunity to address it well ahead of, you know, public hearings, so we can have a complete application replay. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, item B, 24-4 SPL LeBron Lyman, requesting a modification to an approved site plan for 230 Norwich Road to add a loading dock area to existing building, assessors map 15, block 56, lot 7A, C1 zoning district. All right, so it looks like the applicant has requested to withdraw this application and has requested a refund of the application fee. Staff notes that no money has been expended at this point and has no opposition to the refund. Applicant will resubmit. So the application has been withdrawn, but we would need a motion to grant the refund request.
I'll make that motion to grant the refund.
I have a motion by June?
Second.
Second by Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, refund request is granted. All right. Moving on. Item C, 24-3 TA of the town of Plainfield, requesting a modification to Section 14, non-conforming building lots and uses, abandonment, to allow for replacement and modernization of legally non-conforming billboards that advertise Interstate 395 to modern standard. Since it's a text amendment, it does require a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule the public hearing.
I'll make that motion to schedule the public hearing.
At our next regular scheduled meeting, second Tuesday of June. I have a motion by June?
Second.
Second by Bart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, any opposed? Okay, public hearing is scheduled for our next regular meeting. Item D twenty-four dash five SPL of Peter Dish, requesting a site plan review for towing, recovery business, and storage container sales display on property located at eleven fifteen Main Street, assessors map two M, block ninety-eight, lot three, C two zoning district.
We do not have plans for this yet.
Okay, so.
Move to continue to the June meeting?
Second.
I have a motion by Bart to continue, a second by Frank, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Continued. Item E twenty-four dash one zero SP of Fred Stavropoulos, requesting a special permit for continuation of an earth excavation on property located at one ninety-five North Sterling Road, assessors map thirty-seven, block one thirteen, lot three, RA sixty zoning district. This does require a public hearing.
Move public hearing to be scheduled for June eleventh, twenty twenty-four?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Bart to schedule, and I have a second by June, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Public hearing is scheduled. Review and act on the minutes of the April ninth meeting. Did everyone have opportunity to review those?
I wanted to say that they were really wonderful minutes, very easy to read. Thank you, Sharon. The only thing I saw was that Frank was listed, Frank Miller's listed as, and also he's actually a regular member.
And I was absent.
Gotcha. So on roll call for members present, Frank was not present. So he was a member absent.
So he needs to be stripped from the members present line as well as the alternative members absent line, because he's not an alternative member.
Correct, so that just needs to be updated to show member absent. Yep.
Otherwise, I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
All right, motion by June to approve the minutes with that modification.
Second.
I have a second by Bart, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved with that modification. Moving on to correspondence. Have we received any other correspondence besides what was included in the packet?
We have not.
Okay. Report from zoning enforcement?
I have nothing due since your packets were out.
You know, I sent the news for my report. If there are any questions, please make an answer.
Okay. Any questions on the zoning enforcement? Excellent. Report from planning?
Same, nothing due since I saw the packets.
Okay. So under other, we have our discussion regarding the gravel operations. John could not be here tonight, but he did want to put forward to the board that he felt there was a loophole in the regulation, that it does not regulate excavation, processing, and removal for off-site sale or reuse on approved building lots or subdivisions that are regulated under twelve point three-two. He is proposing that we amend to the exceptions provision, and he has submitted some draft language to give to staff so that as we review a draft. So I will leave that to Ryan. And in our discussion, we did talk about modifications to the allowable hours of operation and also to increase buffer zones. So I would like to direct staff to start drafting those three items so that we can review and discuss.
Also, have you done a little bit of research to find out if any of these operations go on? Have we claimed anything that they were original?
Yes, I have been inspecting.
I, I.
I do believe that they were, you were on the list, that I know they were broken.
And you did put that, that was an attachment in the back of the packet. Yeah, so that's, so that's a list in progress. And then, has there been any review of any neighboring zoning regulations that?
I have not yet, straight out.
So, you know, all things being consistent, right? So we would just look to some neighboring towns and see what their regulations have and then decide if we want to include that type of language as well. All right, so we'll have just a working draft for our next meeting for discussion of. All right, I have nothing else under other?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by June?
Second.
I have a second by Bart, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody. Appreciate you.